Councils now in session, please stand for pledge legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which is paying foundation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
And also have a moment of silence for the Barkey family. My classmate, a class of eighty-five, she passed away in one week and the next two weeks her mother passed away, so I'm semi-condolent to this family.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Here.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Galwinski.
Here.
Ulacki.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Enosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here. All present, thank you. Clerk Golick moving on to reading a minute.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that minute be passed and presented and sent on file.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Emerson, passing on the reading of minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Moving on to approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims March eighteenth, twenty fifteen, through April eighth, twenty fifteen, for the meeting of April thirteenth, twenty fifteen, beginning with claims dated three twenty-four fifteen and ending with claims dated four eight fifteen, claim number one nine zero six through claim number two two six four, for a total of one million, five hundred, two thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. I still move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs on the accepting of acceptance of the claims. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the acceptance of the claims? Clerk Golick, roll call, vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Ulacki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims passed, nine zero. Now we're moving on. The public hearing is now open in regards to ordinance fifteen oh nine, and that's designating the first block of Highland Street as honorary John J. Latko Street. Anybody like to speak on this issue? The podium is now open.
That's my father. I would just like to. I just want to say thank you to the council. This is a very big honor, and my father being a longtime resident of Hammond and a Pearl Harbor survivor, and he was also honored at the grounds of the Capitol in two thousand and one for his rescue and heroic deeds during the attack on Pearl Harbor. He was a hard worker, worked at the Mercantile Bank for thirty years, raised a family, lived his whole, almost his whole life in Hammond, so I, you know, I'm very honored that you should take this time and rename the street that he lived on in his name. I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in the public hearing? Seeing none, hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Moving on to communications. Any communications? Hearing none, seeing none, communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports. Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to acknowledge this fifteen dash oh nine be brought out for thirty final
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I believe council as a whole is bringing out fourteen, fifteen ten also.
That's correct.
Already. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
And I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Tuesday, April twenty-first, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at six thirty PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. On Thursday, April sixteenth, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the Gene Shepherd Center at seven PM. And incidentally, the speaker that night at the Hessville Crime Watch will be Bernard Carter, our Lake County prosecutor. He is a very powerful speaker and speaks in brass tacks, and he is absolutely well worth the trip out to the Gene Shepherd Center. On Thursday, April twenty-third, the Indioli Crime Watch will meet at the First Methodist Church, sixty-six thirty-five Roman Avenue, beginning at six thirty PM. The Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet Wednesday, April fifteenth, at Lafayette School, beginning at six thirty PM. Thursday, April sixteenth, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet at the Hammond Housing Authority Building at seven PM. And that is how change happens, one person, one gesture, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, this third and final reading. Clerk Golick.
Ordinance fifteen dash zero nine sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance designating the first block of Highland Street as honorary John J. Latko Street.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of fifteen dash oh nine. I still move.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilwoman Vines for final passage of fifteen oh nine. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Yeah, I'd like to be added as a sponsor, and I'm sure everybody else would. I'll move.
There's a motion by Councilman Hinojosa, second by Councilman Markovich to add us all as sponsors. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I know the gentleman's families here, and I have a great deal of respect hearing about and reading about your father. To be honored and survive Pearl Harbor is a great honor. After reading this, very impressive. However, I wanted to look at the history of what the council has approved in the past, before I was on the council, and by doing a little research, not much. We have honorary streets named after veterans. And by the way, I don't have any problem with anything else he's done. I think he's led a full life. I believe it says in the ordinance, he passed away in his nineties, and did a lot of things with his life. Our honorary street in the fourth district, the eight-hundred-eleven-hundred block of River Drive, was named after Corporal Joe Hernandez, who was killed in Afghanistan. It's four blocks. Our honorary street in the third district, the eight-hundred-nine-hundred block of Carroll, is named after Staff Sergeant Rojas, who was killed in Afghanistan. You know, I sponsored a resolution two years ago, actually three years, almost three years ago, of a gentleman, a Hammond resident, Sergeant Rakowitz, Specialist Rakowitz, excuse me, who was wounded, Purple Heart. Three men around him were wounded, and we gave him a plaque, and his whole family was here, and he was in the Naval Hospital at the time. We also have an honorary park over by the Civic Center named after Private Windridge in the fifty-eight-hundred block of Madison, named after him. He's a Medal of Honor winner, killed in action in Korea on December second, nineteen fifty, at twenty-nine years old. So my point here is, the bar's been set, and as a veteran myself, these three gentlemen, and there may be more, have paid the supreme sacrifice for an honorary street. So had we come up with a plaque, had we come up with a framed copy of the ordinance, I'd be more than happy to vote for that. But I do think that since the bar's been set, I just can't support it the way it's written. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call, vote on fifteen oh nine.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Ulacki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Enosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance fifteen oh nine passes, eight one.
Ordinance fifteen dash ten sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, authorizing the city to issue its taxable economic development revenue bonds, series two thousand fifteen, for the Gateways Area Project, and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of fifteen dash ten.
Second.
It's motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spatelli for final passage of fourteen ten. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, that's fifteen ten.
I'm sorry, fifteen ten. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Just so, just so the public knows, this is, this is going to be for a total, for bonds issued for one point seven million dollars, for the interest rate not to exceed eight percent, and we'll hopefully get a good interest rate.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call, vote, fifteen ten.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Ulacki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance fifteen ten passes, nine zero.
Senator Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to introduction of ordinances.
Item A, to amend ordinances, number forty-one oh nine, fifty thirty-nine, forty-two ninety-eight, known as section one twenty-one, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one of the code as it pertains to pet shops.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of fifteen twelve, placing council as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spatelli, first and second. First team, fifteen twelve, and placing councils as a whole. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
As we discussed at length in caucus, this ordinance is replacing the ordinance fifteen dash eleven that was introduced at the last meeting with several amendments. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Item B, ordinance number fifteen dash thirteen, sponsored by Councilman Hinojosa, and ordinance repealing ordinance ninety-two seventy-seven, which authorized the issuance and sale of thirty-six point five million dollars revenue bonds.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
I move for first and second reading of fifteen dash thirteen.
It's motion by Councilman Hinojosa. We have a second. We have a second on fifteen thirteen.
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Reason I'm, reason I'm asking to pull this is because it's going to go under a private, privatization for thirty-six and a half million dollars. We do not know what the interest rate is going to be. In my opinion, this is to pay out, this is to pay debt out of the thirty-six and a half million, if I understand everything right here, out of the thirty-six and a half million, thirty million is going to be to pay twenty-three million in debt, leaving eight million, and then there's another six and a half million, where three point six stays in reserve with the bond company, and I guess another three million is for charges and wherever else it's going. But in my opinion, I think this is paying one credit card to pay another credit card. My estimate was, and I was a million and a half off, if this is correct, but my, my estimate that these bond payments for eighteen years was going to be five million for twenty years, but it's eighteen years, and from what I heard from the debt person there, the guy that's doing this, that it's going to be roughly around three and a half million for the next eighteen years. But I still don't have a clear, a clear understanding as far as where the thirty million dollars is going to, what debt are we going to pay? Okay, we owe twenty-three million. If we can, if somebody can explain a little more detail of that twenty-three million, how do we accumulate twenty-three million? Give us some figures. Where's the twenty-three million at? What, what, how did that occur? From, from where? And then there's the other six and a half million that, okay, three point six is supposed to go into reserve, that stays with the bond company. Where's that twenty-three, where's that twenty-three million in debt? What did we do to accumulate twenty-three million dollars? And why don't we use, if in twenty fifteen, we're getting eight million dollars a year from the Chicago Heights water deal, why don't we just use that eight million dollars and pay out the debt that we have right now? Why do we have to accumulate more debt and then extra money with the debt? So instead of owing twenty-three million, now we're going to owe thirty-six and a half million, and it's going to be privatized. Privatized to who? I know I heard a figure out, a person, somebody named Daly from Chicago and mayor saying something about they only want to give us half, or somebody wants to give us half. Is it half? Is it the whole thing? But in my opinion here, we're borrowing thirty-six and a half million to pay twenty-three million. That doesn't make sense. And like I said, this is from paying one credit card, borrowing from one credit card to pay another credit card, and you still have debt. Let's, in my opinion, we need to use the Chicago Heights water. If we're getting eight million dollars in twenty fifteen and it has the potential to climb even higher, why don't we use it to pay off the debt? Why do we have to buy more debt? That's, that's my question.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to point out that Councilman Hinojosa keeps on referring to this as something that the Hammond taxpayer is going to have to pay, or in this case, the Hammond water payer. That's absolutely patently unfalse, patently false. It's Chicago Heights water revenue. We sell water to Chicago Heights. When I took over as mayor, the water stream from Chicago Heights was less than a million dollars a year. Because of contract changes we made with the mayor of Chicago Heights, over his objections, by the way, we were sued in federal court. We went to federal court, fought for the contract that they ultimately signed in Chicago Heights, and that contract's revenue now is eight million dollars a year, an eight hundred percent increase in the last few years, and it's only projected to go up. What we're projecting, what we're proposing with this bond increase, and I, with this bond issue is, and I'd like to point out that Councilman Hinojosa voted for this issue when it was in the city budget. We had this bond revenue built in the city budget. He voted yes on it, and then he voted against it in the very next meeting, which is inconsistent. But we're proposing to take this revenue, plug it into our budget, fix our deficit, and move forward with a clean balance sheet. If you tell us to reverse course and you approve what the councilman's recommending, I have no problem with it. I'll pull it, we'll tighten up our belt even more, and we'll fix it over the next few years. We're going in the right direction. You want to fix it now, or you want to fix it three or four years from now? It's up to you. We were given marching orders by the Hammond City Council with a nine zero vote on the budget. We were given marching orders from the Hammond City Council with an eight to one vote on the bond issuance. Now that we're six months into the process, Councilman Hinojosa wants us to go backwards, and that's fine. You want to go backwards? I will kill this thing tomorrow, and then we'll sit back down and we'll come up with a new budget, and we have to go down to the state and get it reapproved by the state because we voted on it. Councilman Hinojosa voted on it. You want to stop all that, reverse course, do our budget over again? Let's do it, no problem. And you're right, Councilman Hinojosa, this administration created a brand-new revenue stream. It's eight hundred percent larger than it was when I took over as mayor, and we could wait a few years and we can get through this. It'll be tough times the next few years, and if that's what you want, I have no problem with it. I'm the mayor, I work with the council. If you have five votes that says, "Mayor, we're going this direction," I promise you, I will kill this bond issue tomorrow without a problem. I will sleep well tonight. I say, let's just get it over with.
Mr. President.
Let's vote it up or down. If you guys don't want us to do this, let's just stop wasting time. I got a lot of people making a lot of money. Let's kill it right now. Why are we waiting two more weeks? Let's kill it today, if you want to kill it. Please.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
My concern is, it relates to this particular ordinance, is the fact that the debt services has to be paid, no matter what. The reality of it is, if you don't pay the debt services, there's going to be an interest rate that's going to go up anyway. But I guess my question would be, as I asked in caucus, what is the debt of our city currently? And only, if the controller can answer.
The deficit?
The deficit of our.
It's a deficit of around twelve or thirteen million dollars a year right now, deficit. That's an annual recurring thing, meaning that our budget is more than, without using gaming, by the way. We use gaming this year. That deficit adds up over time if you don't address it. We're trying to address, I'm answering your question, Councilman. We're trying to address it now with this. If you don't want us to, no problem. Let's just kill it, let's just come to a resolution tonight.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
You know, patience is a virtue, and I guess my question again was, currently, you say it annually, what is the deficit of our city as we speak? The debt?
Debt.
Debt, not the deficit. Well, debt.
General fund debt?
Yes.
Twenty-three million, right now.
Initially, you said twelve million, that's why.
That's our deficit.
Okay.
It's a recurring, and what we usually do, and all of you are aware of this because we have these conversations once a year, Councilman Hinojosa's been in eleven of these conversations with the budget, we use gaming to shore up that deficit. If you don't use gaming to shore up that deficit, that's fine, but we have to cut our expenses or raise our revenue. We can't raise revenue because we have property tax caps, which means we cut expenses. So you do things like decide whether or not your city has a health department, right? I remember where you were on that issue. Decide whether or not you're going to provide public transportation. Decide whether or not two hundred and ten police officers is the number we actually need. Decide whether or not a hundred and fifty-five firemen is the actual number we need. Let's be honest, eighty percent, seventy-five to eighty percent of our expenses are in police and fire. So if you want to cut budget, that's a whole nother matter. We've been having these discussions for twelve years, saying, "Okay, I don't want to cut police officers because I like having two hundred and ten Hammond police officers. I don't want to cut fire engines or firemen because I like having a hundred and fifty-five firemen." If we've changed our opinion on that, now is the time to discuss it.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess my question would be, is if we was to repeal this bond issuance, how would it affect the city, Mayor? And if you could explain, and hopefully the Times won't, will print this correctly.
Why does it have anything to do with if the Times is here or not? Let's just talk.
Well, the reason I say that, Mayor, because previously, there's been council meetings where things have been edited out of council meetings, and all types of things have occurred. So I want to make sure that my voice is being heard as it relates to asking questions from my constituents who I happen to represent in the third district. No disrespect, you are administrator of the city, but I happen to represent a portion of the city.
I understand, I appreciate that, Councilman.
Okay, thank you.
If we, if you vote right now to repeal this ordinance, I will tell all the financier, financial advisors, the banks that are interested in this, the lawyers that are working on this, the deal is dead. We're not going forward with it. What that'll do to our city controller is blow a hole in our budget because we already voted nine zero on a budget that included this revenue. So we'll have to go back, reopen that budget, adjust it, tighten our belts, go back down state, bring the budget to the state, have them approve our amended bud, our amended budget, and we'd have to do that probably in twenty sixteen, and we'd have to probably do that in twenty seventeen. And by that time, the eight million dollars per year will probably pay off what we're trying to do right now in one year.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
So, if this were repealed, the phone calls that I've been getting about sidewalks, about trees, about cleaning up alleys, about debris laying around vacant buildings, all of that stuff is going to be cut. The people who ask for lights, the people who want their streets to be done, we currently have trash pickup once a week, maybe that'll go to, once every two weeks. This is, this is what you are asking of our residents. I don't know about the phone calls that you people get, but I know about the phone calls that I get, and they have to do with quality of life issues. We cut the budget, that stuff is out. You're not going to be able to complain about that tenant two lifts, three doors down, who throws all the junk in the alley. You're going to be over there cleaning it up. Well, you're one of the nice people. Most people think that it's government's responsibility to clean up the mess. It's not.
Order, order, order.
So, this is a choice. I'm just, just saying.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I would just ask that, let's just get this done tonight. If we're going to play games, I mean, if we're playing games because there's an election on May fifth, this is hurting the bond rating. What Chico's doing right now is creating risk in our bond. Risk equals higher interest rates. So the more risk we create, which is being, you know, which is happening right now, it's going to only drive the interest rate up. So I suggest we get it over with right now. If you guys want to, could I talk, Councilman?
Sure.
If you want to kill the bond, let's kill it now. Let's, let's all agree, nine zero, we're going to take this up or down and vote it up or down. We voted for the budget, nine zero. We voted for this, you gave us our marching orders. If you guys are going back, do it tonight, please. Don't string this out for another two weeks. Let's just get it done because we have a job to do. We're doing what you told us to do. Now because there's an election coming and somebody's grandstanding, you're, you're talking about going back on our word, which is making our job harder to sell this bond.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
First and foremost, let me say this. My main concern is making sure that the citizens are represented to the best of their ability in providing the services that are needed. I don't play high-go seat, go ahead and hide a rock and all that other stuff. The reality of it is, it's important that we have discussion and dialogue and address the concerns for our citizens. By allowing you, as well as Councilman Hinojosa, to speak on the issue opens and enlightens us so that we can make a very concrete interest decision in deciding on which direction to go.
Mr. President.
Now, let me finish, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have the floor. In saying that, if this council so choose to, they can reopen it and kill it.
Then do it.
Okay, you've already explained that, Mayor. What you really need to understand is the fact that we all have a right to speak, and by you approaching it in this way, it, it makes no sense. You already expressed your concern, and as an administrator of the city, you let us know that and how it would affect the city. The rest of it is not needed, seriously.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, as the Roberts Rules of Order, you're given two opportunities to speak on each ordinance. I give you guys ample amount of time to speak on it. Councilman Higgs, Councilman Hinojosa, you guys are done. Councilwoman Vines, you have one more. Mr. Mayor.
I forgot what I was going to say.
Mr. President, I'll speak if he's not ready.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, we've already had two discussions on this, Mr. President. We voted on it in the budget, and we were given authorization to go forward, and we did what we were told. Now we're having the third discussion, Councilman Higgs, and I agree, you have the right to do what you're doing, but it's not making our job any easier, and it's hurting our bond, and if that's what we're trying to do, congratulations, you're sabotaging this bond, and it's making it harder to sell, and it's going to be high risk, higher risk because of what we're going through right now, and maybe we don't want to do this. So kill it. Just do it tonight. Let's don't string this out two more weeks. Let's just do it now. Up or down? I'm fine either way.
Clerk Golick, we have a first and second. We're going to have a roll call vote on first and second.
Mr. President, I still want to speak on this.
You've spoke. Two Roberts Rules of Order, twice. I give you, about six times you spoke, Councilman Inahosa. Two's the limit, Roberts Rules of Order.
I only spoke, Mr. President, I only spoke once or twice, let me speak.
Councilman Kowinski.
I want to be clear about the vote. Thank you. If we vote yes, then for this ordinance, then we're repealing, we're stopping the bond issuance process, is that correct?
That's correct.
No vote is to continue with the issue, the bond issue.
That's correct.
Mr. President, it doesn't, it, he didn't want it to go to committee?
Yes. Exactly. Mr. President?
Mr. President.
He's trying to put this in committee.
Point of order. Yes. Point of order, it is, it's first and second, put it in the committee.
Mr. President, I call for point of order.
We're voting if it goes into committee.
Point of order.
That's correct. Mr. Chairman? Councilman Markovich.
I believe that when the motion was made, there was no committee listed to put it in. There was no committee listed.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Do we have a committee?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, I call for point of order, I was trying to give you some clarity as to which direction to, uh, get this resolved, but for some reason or another, I was overlooked. The reality of it is, it was never put into committee, and in order to pass this, it would have to be on third and final.
This was for first and second reading.
Right, so I mean, it's just being put in committee, it wasn't. But, again, for clarity, if you so choose to, any one of the council members could say, they want to reopen this on the new and unfinished business, and kill it.
Mr. President.
Councilman Inahosa.
All right, I understand this, right, the Janice Vines, Councilwoman Janice Vines is saying that, uh, that it's going to be used, uh, that we're going to be stopping, uh, for using this money for trees, and sidewalks, and, uh, streets. Uh, you know what? The, the council, each district councilman is go, only getting a half million dollars a year. This year, 2015, and who knows where we're going to get for the next couple of years. But a half million dollars is not even enough to do one complete street. One complete street is approximately six-hundred thousand dollars. We only get five-hundred thousand. Now, and now I'm hearing that part of this thirty-six million dollars, according to Councilwoman Janice, uh, Janice Vines, is that we're going to be using some of this money for streets and sidewalks also? But here's what I'm looking at. If we're going to borrow thirty-six and a half million dollars, I think that's too much. If we only have a debt of twenty-three million dollars, if that's true, I, I wish we had a better clarification as far as what debt that is, and where it came from. But if, if it's twenty-three million dollars, and we're getting eight million dollars from Chicago Heights, uh, let's subtract five million dollars, uh, from the twenty-three, that equals eighteen, and that gives you another three to play with for reserve and all that. I'd like an amendment to, uh, uh, make that thirty-six and a half million dollars to, well, it's already says to repeal it. Nope, I think we'll just call for the vote. I know where the vote's going to go anyways.
Mr. President.
Councilman Inahosa, what, what are you assigning this commit, what, what committee you're putting this in?
Finance. Well, if, even, even if we put this in, in, in committee for first and second reading, that doesn't stop the thirty-six and a half million dollars. The thirty-six half, a half million dollars is still to go. This is only to repeal it. This is going to first and second reading, and this is just to repeal it. But, but I'll put it, I'll put it in councils as a whole. First and second reading, I'll put it in the councils as a whole.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
This is water revenue from Chicago Heights. Not one Hammond tax, not one Hammond water customer will see one red cent increase in their bill. Not a penny. To a Hammond resident, to a Hoosier, not a penny. Not even anybody in Cal City. Not even anybody in Lansing. This is one of our streams, it's a small part of it, it's Illinois money, coming over here to help us run our government. This is good business where I come from. It's like, I wish we could do stuff like this with fireworks. Where all these people from Chicago come over to our city, buy our fireworks. Wouldn't it be nice if we had a little tax for the city Hammond on there? We could help finance the Hammond Fire Department? Or if people come over and buy guns from Cabela's? Wouldn't it be nice if we had a tax where we help pay for police officers' vests? This is the same kind of thinking. We're using Illinois money to help finance our books in Hammond, Indiana. This is good business where I come from. Illinois money.
Councilman Kowinski.
If I'm clear, Councilman Inahosa's asking for first and second reading, and councils as a whole.
That's correct.
And if we put it in commit, and if we put it in committee, then we don't vote on it today, if it goes into committee, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
But also, Councilman Kowinski, you also can open it back up on the new and unfinished business. If you get a motion and a second, you can also kill it.
That's also correct. So, we're calling for the vote? All those in favor, first and second, placing fifteen, thirteen in councils as a whole, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote. Roll call vote, Clerk Golick. Markovich?
No.
Spatelli?
No.
Vines?
No.
Kowinski?
No.
Ullaki?
No.
He'd be gone.
Where was the, um- Where was I voting?
Vote on this thing, to go to committee.
You go to committee? No.
Emerson?
No.
Inahosa?
Yes.
Opinker? No. First and second fails, eight-one.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for introductions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, the, um, hold on just one second, what is it, fourteen, uh, fifteen-fourteen?
Yeah, one more.
Uh, I intended on that to be introduced this evening. It was originally in our packet as a resolution.
Clerk, clerk has it. It would be item C, ordinance number fifteen dash fourteen, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, an ordinance to create a new section of chapter thirty-seven of the city policy prohibiting discrimination based upon sexual orientation and gender identity.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of fifteen-fourteen.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spatelli, first and second on fifteen-fourteen, is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
President Opinker, now the introduction of ordinances has been concluded.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, resolution fifteen R dash zero five, sponsored by Councilman Kowinski. A resolution of the city, of the Hammond City Council, confirming a resolution R fifteen, fourteen R dash fifteen, that designated and established a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area, to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the common council of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash one, two point one.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for passage of fifteen R dash oh five, with a public hearing scheduled for April twenty-seventh, 2015. Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Emerson, uh, for final passage of fifteen R oh five, with a public hearing set on April twenty-seventh, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is set on fifteen R oh five, for April twenty-seventh, 2015.
Item C, resolution fifteen R zero seven, sponsored by Councilman Higgs. A resolution regarding so-called religious freedom statute.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of resolution fifteen oh seven, I so moved.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli, for final passage of fifteen R oh seven.
Mr. President?
Councilman, any discussion? Uh, Mr., uh, Councilman Higgs.
Is that fifteen oh six? I said fifteen oh seven.
Yes, fifteen R oh seven, I'm sorry. Fifteen R oh seven. Is there any discussion on fifteen R oh seven?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs.
Certainly, as you know, the governor recently signed that, uh, into law, discriminatory actions. And I feel it's just ridiculous, and it really makes me sad to be a Hoosier, that he would, makes me, reminds me of the civil rights movement when blacks were only allowed to go in certain washrooms. That's, that's the indication that it gives me, and it just saddens me that he would even sign something into law of this nature.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor.
I want to thank Councilman Higgs and Councilwoman Vines for bringing up two ordinances, uh, ordinance and a resolution that deals with this issue. What happened with our FRA passing, Senate Bill one-on-one passing, is an embarrassment to our state. Um, actually, a lot of the language Councilman Higgs uses in his resolution is the same type of language I was using, uh, on behalf of our governor, who I feel embarrassed the state of Indiana nationally. I just got back from Florida, uh, for Easter break with my family, and in the small-town newspaper where we were staying, there was an article about Indiana, and, uh, making fun of us. It's a national embarrassment, Senate Bill one-on-one. I think there's been a lot of councils across the state of Indiana that have come out with similar type of ordinances that the councilwoman's proposing, and similar type of resolutions that the councilman is presenting. In fact, I know Councilman Dave Hamm on the Lake County Council, they just recently passed something very similar to what you're contemplating right now, so I just wanted to give you my full support and say thank you for bringing this up. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on fifteen R oh seven.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spatelli?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kowinski?
Yes.
Ullaki?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Inahosa?
Yes.
Opinker?
Yes, fifteen R oh seven passes, nine-zero.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I'd like to suspend the rules for final passage of fifteen dash fourteen.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Kowinski to suspend the rules. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rule suspended.
Uh, I move for final passage of fifteen-fourteen.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Kowinski, on final passage of fifteen R fourteen. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, just because of the importance of this, um, ordinance, and, uh, I, I think it's, it's very important that the general public know that, uh, and, and I'm sure everyone in this room understands that we as Hoosiers are very hospitable and welcoming people. Uh, for our state legislature and our governor to single out a group of people was reprehensible. Uh, I saw in a, and I will read through the, uh, the ordinance, but if you will indulge me for just one moment. Before I came here this evening, there was an article online, uh, in the Times, "Indiana Trying to Improve Reputation Following Religious Freedom Fiasco." Uh, the two-year state budget proposal approved last week by the Senate Appropriations Committee added one million dollars to tourism, funding specifically to undo the damage RFRA caused the state's reputation. That was, uh, money that was completely, um, uncalled for, to be spent, had our state legislators and our governor use their head. Um, however, the Republican-controlled General Assembly has declined to consider adding lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Hoosiers as a protected class under Indiana's civil rights law, leaving them open to discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations for reasons other than religion. So, they still refuse to accept it. I would like to, uh, read this in its entirety, if you will indulge me. Whereas on March twenty-sixth, 2015, Indiana Governor Michael Pence signed into law Senate Enrolled Act one-on-one, the Religious Freedom Restoration Action, RFRA. Whereas the RFRA passed by the General Assembly and signed by the governor allows businesses in Indiana to discriminate against lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals by citing to such practices being part of a religious belief and system, uh, belief system. And whereas legalized discrimination in any form does severe social and economic harm to the state of Indiana. And whereas, since, since the passage of RFRA, companies such as Angie's List have halted planned expansion in Indiana. The state of Illinois has attempted to lure Indiana companies away from Indiana based on the law. Gen Con has canceled its scheduled convention in Indiana. The states of Washington and Connecticut have banned taxpayer-funded travel to Indiana. Seattle and San Francisco have banned taxpayer-funded travel to Indiana. The musical group Wilco has canceled its May seventh, 2015 concert in Indianapolis. Salesforce dot com has stated the law will result in the company's reduced involvement in Indiana. Cummins Diesel Engine Company, Yelp, and PayPal have publicly criticized the bill, and have indicated such actions are business unfriendly, and will affect business decisions in the state. And the NCAA has expressed concern, concerns about hosting future events in Indiana. And whereas discrimination sanctioned by law in an aff, uh, affront to the dignity of all citizens of Hammond, as well as all of Indiana. Whereas the city of Hammond wishes to publicly and officially adopt an ordinance which prohibits discrimination in employment, housing, services, and accommodations. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Hammond, that it will, that, uh, it is the will of the citizens of Hammond, by and through the Hammond Common Council, that chapter thirty-seven, which is the city policy, be expanded as follows. Non-discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. In addition to the existing protections previously adopted regarding race, religion, color, national origin, ancestry, and disability, it is the policy of the city of Hammond that it does not discriminate in the provision or implementation of its programs and services on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity, or perception of the same. It is the public policy of the city to provide all citizens equal opportunity for education, employment, access to public accommodations, and acquisition through purchase or rental of real property, including but not limited to housing, and to eliminate segregation or separation based on sexual orientation, gender, identity, or perception of same, since such segregation is an impediment to equal opportunity. Equal education and employment opportun, opportunities, and equal access to and use of public accommodations, and equal opportunity for acquisition of real property are hereby declared to be civil rights. The practice of denying these rights to persons because of sexual orientation, gender identity, or perception of same, is contrary to the prin, the principles, freedom, and equality of opportunity, and is a burden to the objectives of the public policy of the city, and shall be considered as discriminatory practices. The promotion of equal opportunity without regard to sexual orientation, gender identity, or perception of same, is the purpose of this section. It is also the public policy of the city to protect employers, labor organizations, employment agencies, property owners, real estate brokers, builders, and lending institutions from unfounded charges of discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, or perception of same. It is hereby declared to be contrary to the public policy of the city, and an unlawful practice to induce or attempt to induce any person to sell or rent any dwelling by representations regarding the entry into the neighborhood of a person or persons of a particular sexual orientation, gender, identity, or perception of same, or to deny any such person's service or accommodation, accommodations at any business located in the city of Hammond. Any business violating this ordinance may be subject to license revocation pursuant to section one-nineteen of the Hammond Municipal Code. For purposes of this ordinance, sexual orientation means an individual's identity or practice as a lesbian woman, gay male, bisexual person, or heterosexual person, whether actual or perceived. Gender identity means a person's actual or perceived gender related at- Gender identity means a person's actual or perceived gender-related attributes, self-image, appearance, expression, or behavior, whether or not such characteristics differ from these traditionally associated with the person's assigned sex at birth. The Hammond Human Relations Commission is empowered to investigate, conciliate, hear complaints, enter into consent degrees, and seek judicial enforcement of its orders concerning any violations of this ordinance. Further be it ordained by the Hammond, the city of Hammond intends to create an enforceable ordinance which is compliant with all federal, state, and local laws in the event that this ordinance, or any part of it, or any provision, or any classification contained therein, is found to be unconstitutional, the remaining portion will remain in effect and will be found to be valid. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Uh, just real, just real quick, so everybody from Hammond, uh, here knows, uh, what we're getting into here with that 36 and a half million dollars. Real quick, uh, three and a half million dollars.
Order, 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 order.
Point of order.
We're totally on something else, Councilman Hinojosa.
Point of order.
Sorry.
Point of order. Point of order.
Any other discussion on?
Point, point of order.
15-14.
Point of order.
Councilman Hicks.
Thank you. That's the way the council meeting is supposed to reside. When I call for a point of order, as your president, you're supposed to allow me to tell you what the point of order is. That's why I was stopping it. But the reality of it is, we're not discussing 36 million dollars right now. We have an ordinance on first and second reading.
Thank you, Councilman Hicks.
Mr. President, I apologize for that.
Any other discussion on 15-14? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
An ordinance to create a new section of Chapter 37.
Roll call vote. Okay. Okay, thank you, Clerk Golick.
Chapter 37 city policy prohibiting discrimination based upon sexual orientation and gender identity. Now on the roll call, Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Van Ness.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ullaki.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinojosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, 15-14 passes, nine, zero.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
Can we see how that's sent to all the state legislators, whether it's the governor's office as well?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I think, uh, just to be sensitive, Councilman Hicks, not that I don't think it's a good idea, some of the, there's strong language in that resolution. It's like saying that you think legislators should all step down, and I mean, I said the same thing.
I didn't.
I said the same thing, Councilman Hicks, but not all the legislators voted for it, so I think we should be careful if we're going to blast them. It might put Hammond on the radar, and I don't think Hammond... Listen, Councilman Hicks, I agree with what you're saying. I just want to be careful because things come back to bite. Okay?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
Mayor, I wonder if my name was sponsoring that ordinance, if you would've jumped up and said that. You think you would've, you would've said, "Don't send it?"
No, I'm not saying that. Councilman Hicks, all I'm saying is, there's some legislators that voted against that, and for them to get that, they may read it like you want them to step down, and they're the, they're the good guys, in my opinion.
Well, I have to read...
That's all I'm saying, Councilman Hicks, is to be careful.
I understand, but nowhere in that reading that did it say anyone, to tell anyone, any one of the legislators to step down. I didn't hear that.
In the resolution? Or are you talking about the ordinance?
The ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Van Ness.
I'd like to return to the regular order of business.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Van Ness, second by Councilman Hinojosa, and move back to regular order of business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
I, I did apologize to Councilwoman Janet Van Ness. I just, I just, uh, was amazed, uh, at this calculator. At three and a half million dollars times 18 years is $63 million. We're borrowing 36 and a half million dollars. That, uh, that three and a half million, if, if not higher, well, three and a half million times 18 years is $63 million. That's $26 million in interest. I still don't see why we're doing this when we're getting 8 million dollars from Chicago Heights. Let's use that and pay the 23 million dollars in three years and be done with it. Why get in debt for 63 million dollars? Again, there's that credit card, paying a credit card, it don't make no sense at all.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Van Ness.
I do believe we voted on that, and, uh, case closed. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
Uh, just to, um, bring it down a little bit, um, I'd like a letter sent to, uh, the department heads from the Board of Works, as well as, uh, the Streets and Sand, for a property at, uh, 5603 between Maywood and Calumet has been cleaned up, and the debris has been sitting in the alley for about two weeks. I've been, I've called and asked for Gary Gleason. Uh, he didn't come to the phone. I called and asked for Mr. Perez, and he was nice enough to return my phone call. I think it's ridiculous when a councilman reaches out to department heads and requests that something be cleaned up throughout the district, and it takes them two weeks to get it clean. So I'm requesting that a letter be sent to, uh, that department, and, and certainly there are other properties within my district that I'm constantly, uh, sending letters in regards to, and for some reason or another, they're being neglected. Uh, I would appreciate it, and I'm glad the mayor is here, so he can certainly hear me out in terms of, uh, some of the vacant properties that's been boarded up for a number of years, where I've sent letters and called as well. Uh, I don't know what it is when it comes to the third, uh, it takes quite a bit of time to get these things accomplished, but, uh, this is something I do on the regular, and we can pull them up. Uh, it's not just because it's election time, this is something I do year-round. And so I would appreciate, Mayor, if you could please talk to your department heads and have them, uh, pay some attention to these deplorable properties within my district.
5603 Calumet?
Correct, in the alley between Maywood and Calumet. Thank you so much.
I just submitted it, she-clicked fix. Took me about 12 seconds. I put 5603 Calumet, illegal dumping. Uh, Councilman Hicks is arguing about a lack of cleanup, and I didn't have a picture, but I put 5603 Calumet in she-clicked fix. Took me about 30 seconds. Thank you, Councilman Hicks.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I'd like to announce that, uh, Hammond High School, uh, JROTC, Junior Reserve Officers' Training Corps, will, is having a 5K run, April 25th, that's a Saturday, uh, to celebrate the 99th year of ROTC, their anniversary. And for those of you that don't know, that is sort of, uh, the entry point. A lot of young folks get interested in the military through ROTC. So, uh, it begins 11:00 AM at Hammond High on April 25th. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Unfinished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression. First speaker of the, of the evening, Carlotta Blake King.
Good evening. I too would like to make an announcement for Hammond High School. On June 25th, um, Tom Bylick, I believe, I pronounced his name, he's an alumni of Hammond High. He and Theodore McLendon is doing the tomfoolery review. It's June 25th, it's going to be right here in Hammond, and it's to raise money for a technology, um, program that's going to help their arts and music program there. So I will have tickets, so I will probably share with you to buy a ticket to support Hammond High School. Additionally, I would like to applaud, uh, Janet Van Ness and Anthony for, uh, getting that, uh, that resolution on the books regarding the gender and, and the Religious Freedom Act. However, um, I'm, I'm wondering, what are we doing to enforce the, uh, the resolution that was, um, that you guys voted on nine, zero, I think it was 23 months ago, regarding, uh, including everyone when it comes to hiring and, and the city of Hammond? As we look at our 2010 demographics, uh, it goes such as, it goes like this. Uh, white, 59.4 percent, black, 22.5 percent, Asian, 1.1 percent, other, 16.6 percent, and Hispanic, 34.1 percent. So I believe that ordinance that you all voted on nine, one, uh, indeed would mean that our city would reflect these percentages in our city administration, in our police and fire, in everything we do, business-wise, contracts, what have you, uh, these numbers should reflect, and that's the ordinance that you all passed, uh, several months ago. So I, I just hope this is not rhetoric, uh, as the ordinance you passed today regarding, uh, discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender, and so forth and so on. And, and my final comment is regarding this, uh, 36.5 million dollar revenue bond. Now, I am a taxpayer. I've been living in the city of Hammond for a long time, and, uh, listening to this whole discussion regarding these finances. I know at one point, the city, the city of Hammond, uh, was in what we call in good fiscal condition. Now, according to the city address, we're in stable condition, and I'm just wondering if, uh, I'm reminded of the movie Philadelphia. Remember when Denzel Washington was, was, uh, defending, um, uh, what was the guy's name? Tom Hanks, uh, in his situation? And he clearly said, "Could you just make it as simple that a child could understand? I don't like being bullied, uh, into something." And that's how I felt, listening, uh, you know, "You either do it now or you don't. Transparency is the key to what you all do when it comes to our fiscal stability in this city." And you should make it as simple and clear that even a child could understand. And I'm, I'm certain a child cannot understand the fiscal state of this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. King. Final speaker of the evening, Mr. George Stoya. I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Hicks.